Our act house, I'm gonna. Call for roll call, Caroline, this is our regular meeting Thursday, June thirteen, twenty twenty four. Roll call, please. Oh, sorry. Board of trustees, regular meeting is now called the order at four thirty. We welcome members of the public instruction making public comment are posted in item one on the agenda. We will ask if each item, if there is public comment. The board recognizes the college's contributions. And support of the LGBTQ plus community in June as private month. Through our policies, actions, innovative educational programs and professional development. Training Catherine, can we do a roll call now?
Uh trustee Rios is absent, trustee Olson. Trustee Dodd.
Here.
For a student trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Trustee Kishneff.
Present and accounted for.
Trustee Delena is not present, but we expect her trustee Baker here. And uh. Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Yes, trustee Delena is present.
Thank you.
And trustee Iverson.
Here.
You guys. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Of what which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Thank you. Uh two point three, this is our land acknowledgement. As we gather today, it is important to acknowledge that Napa Valley College and the surrounding Napa Valley sit on the unceded. Traditional ancestral and contemporary homelands of the Miwok. Pot one were comprised of three federally recognized tribes. The Koshodehi Band of Windon Indians of the Clusa. Indian community, the Klitzold Deji Band of Windon Indians and the Yoka Yocha Deji Windon Nation. And Wapo, including the Mishwa Wapo, also known as the Anastasi's peoples. As part of the Napa Valley College's mission of transforming lives through excellent educational and professional opportunities. That are student centered, equity focused. And community oriented and in accordance with the college's values of accountability, integrity, inclusion. Respect, social justice and sustainability. We make this acknowledgement. We also affirm that this acknowledgement is insufficient. It does not undo the harm that has been and continues to be perpetrated against indigenous people. The land and water, may we hold steady in our commitment to be in solidarity. And in action to seek equity and justice with the Miwok, Potwin and Wapo peoples. And I'm gonna go to two point four adoption of the agenda. And I am gonna, we're moving twelve point seven, that's the easement agreement with Napa Valley Transportation Authority. Forward to become eight point one. With that change, do I? Have an adoption of the agenda?
Move approval.
Uh motion, my trustee Baker and a second, my trustee Olson, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I do. And this point, the board will devote a total of about fifteen minutes. To hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments would be limited to three minutes Catherine. No public.
No public comment.
Okay, at this point, we're moving to closed session. Covering items four point one, Conference of Labor Negotiators. Four point two pursuant to section fifty four nine five seven, public employment. And four point three, public employee performance evaluation, and we will return at five thirty. Thank you. I rated for any partial need of service, you guys are the best started, sorry. I had a problem. Not too rushed, you're good, alright, so reported length about it is like. Okay, and we're gonna, we're going to put a comment now, Catherine. This public comment opportunity is governed by the California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, differing vantage points. The board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion. But we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the board will develop up to fifteen minutes to review comment. For the board of trustees regarding any subject not appearing as an agenda item. For this meeting, but over which the board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion occur at this time with such items. Each comment shall last more than three minutes. Not know what early Catherine, but is there any public comment right now?
We have no public comment.
If we do. For everybody, you can say, jumping out on this journey a little early. Uh next is item seven, this is our consent calendar. And I will look for a motion on our consent calendar and.
Uh, I would like to pull item seven point eight from consent, please.
Okay.
Motion to approve remainder of consent.
Second.
Have a motion, my trustee Dodd and a second by trustee Baker, Catherine. And with that. We're pulling item seven point eight, authorization of the destruction of records, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Uh so. Florence, can you?
So we move to the seven point eight item first.
Right. And this is the again authorization of the destruction of records. Also Jim.
I know I did. But I could speak to just general nature of the importance of this, um. We are actually, uh. Failed in some instances as changed files or records, thank you. They're actually compelled to destroy uh certain files and records, uh. As a matter of course, it's something that the college has not done for some time, um. It could say a good practice is relates to. Best practices within. I'm sorry. Liability purposes uh being a consideration among them, just. The uh the challenge of maintaining the records in terms of physical space and capacity is a consideration as well, uh with limited space. Uh so. I think it's a fairly standard practice, uh something that we uh would like to see. The other institutions or other departments around the campus engage in moving forward as well.
And did you have a specific question on it, Jason?
I don't have a question. I am an absolutist on this, it's not that I have an issue that I think anything is going on, but I don't think records should be destroyed. That's why we have records, so that that we can go keep check the record, um. Mistakes happen, and things are misentered, files disappear, hacks happen where we lose our system and. Sometimes we're gonna need to go back and check originals and I I personally feel that the originals should be there. Um and so I'm just not gonna go for this.
Okay. Uh real quick, Jim, not to throw you on the spot because I didn't start early, but could you just? Little overview on seven point eight, which is the. The block of.
Certainly.
Would be.
Legal counsel provides guidance on what records should can uh be kept for a period of time. And so we align with that, there are some records that are fairly innocuous that. Take up space, frankly, they're not all electronically recorded. And uh we we uh. We need the the ability to to eliminate those because they have no useful purpose nor nor are they guided by statute in terms of retaining. So that's what you're saying on the agenda.
Motion to approve uh the destruction of records as stated in uh item seven point eight.
I have a motion, my trustee Dodd, do I have a second?
Okay.
A second by trustee Baker, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all those in opposition?
Nay.
Nay, thank you, uh Catherine, you got that, one dissent. Thank you, next we are moving to twelve point seven. This is the amended and restated grant easement agreement with the city of Napa, Napa Valley College Transportation Authority. And we move this forward, so. Jim.
Thank you, President Iverson, uh we have Rebecca here, a representative from uh the county of Napa, is that correct Rebecca? I'm sorry. The Transportation Authority, this matter was brought before the board at the May meeting. And after some uh study, it was determined that some additional work needed to be done on on this. And uh uh the Transportation Authority has responded and uh would certainly. Um uh ask for any questions, the two areas of clarification. Rebecca, I would ask you to feel free to jump in here, were two, the thresholds for insurance. Appeared to be extraordinarily high, certainly based on what the the district is accustomed to, uh and they had made that adjustment. The additional condition was that the college, the district would assume the repair of damages. To the improvements, the bus stop. In the event that the city had to make repairs to the subterranean utility infrastructure that would go below that area. And that uh raised uh concerns, obviously, that the district um did not want to be on the hook for making repairs. In that, in that situation. The uh Transportation Authority has come back uh with a proposed revision to the MOU. Uh which would um, the revision includes a provision. That the Napa Valley Transportation Authority would assume responsibility for those repairs in the event that. That damage were to occur. Rebecca, would you add anything to that?
I think that covers it, yeah, those were the two issues and we've, I believe we've addressed them.
Yeah, and I I think I had the most, I think, r- raised the flags, and I really appreciate MBTA is just stepping up to address that liability issue. My one, I think, uh little nitpick on it is the easement agreement runs with the land, the MOU does not. Um and the MOU isn't referenced in the easement at all. Uh the challenge is if something happens ten years from now, the natural assumption is that the college is going to be on hook for the liability provision, so. What I would like to do is propose a motion that we're able to tie the MOU into the easement. Uh so it's actually referenced in the easement such that. All the parties that look at this document, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now and so on, will know that that um. Uh liability, uh comfort, uh coverage and and risk assumption is on MBTA and is not on the college, so to that end, I'll approve um. Approve the document contingent upon mutually agreed language between the district and the city linking the MOU uh and the easement agreement. Or in the alternative, the city just assumes the liability if they destroy our property, so.
Understood.
Did you have a?
Oh, understood, that was, um, we had talked about it previously and that's we'd be willing to um. Take that on and work with the city to get the MOU cited in the easement agreement. And um if we do that and the board, it moves with this action and then um signatures would move forward.
Um this is an exciting project and. With the language that uh trustee Dodd has pointed out and and BTA and. Jim Reeves, I'd like to entertain a motion. Just made it. Well, you did.
I'll second. Trustee Dodd's motion.
I was gonna ask you, but okay, I have a motion, my trustee Dodd and a second by trustee Olson. Do you have any questions? Jason, question?
No.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Ford seeing it be done, thank you.
I'm very excited, I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody good? Alright. We're we're moving along, okay. Alright, so action eight point one, the consideration to modify an employment agreement. Do we have any? Public comment on this?
No public comment.
Have a motion.
Move approval.
All those, do I have a second? You made the, oh, so I'm motion by trustee Baker and a most second by trustee Delena. All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. Moving to eight point two, this is a resolution ordering governing board member elections.
Motion to approve? I have a second.
Motion by trustee Dodd and a second by trustee Kishness, all those in favor?
I.
Hi, any public comment, Catherine?
No public comment.
Right, eight point three, this is a board goals twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six, it's an action item. I have a.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, my trustee Dodd.
I'll second.
Any public comment?
Olson?
Does this action also incorporate what we had discussed about making?
Yes.
Okay.
And for two years. Yeah.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 I'm not sure what that motion was, approve this.
The goals as as reflected in that.
To do the.
Wanna do the thing.
For the the board goals, to approve the board goals for the two year period.
Or, but look at the manual, was that it?
Yes. Trying to slow it down a little bit, you guys.
I see.
I I did.
We're on summer break, baby.
Alright. Uh so, may make sure. Alright, eleven point one, this is revised equal employment opportunity plan for Napa Valley. College, I'm gonna. Ask if there's any pub- public comment, I'm gonna start with that.
We have no public comment.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'm left to approve.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
Any discussion on it, you guys?
That was awesome.
So we had trustee Dodd again, motion, we had this. Okay.
And the second? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next is twelve point one, this is our tentative budget. Jim, take some time on this one for me?
Thank you, President Iverson, I I apologize in advance if I slow the cadence down here a bit. I can call your attention to the um, to the twenty four twenty five tentative budget for Napa Valley College, um. I uh slide two, the next slide, Catherine, thank you. Um. I will, uh I'm gonna hit the high points and I would just ask that you just jump in wherever you have questions or uh need additional clarification. The tentative budget allows the uh the district to operate physically and legally, beginning July first. The process uh uh for budget development and option and adoption begins with the tentative budget. Which uh you will consider this evening uh through the summer. And into the very early fall, we'll be, we will have an additional opportunity to refine some of the assumptions. And the data here and bring a final budget back to the board for their consideration, your consideration in September, um. We have made some uh uh what I would call a significant progress in terms of. How uh transparent and open and uh engaging our process was this year. In good measure, large measure to the work of the planning committee and the budget committees who collaborated. Uh carefully and at great length to to um bring greater awareness, to increase engagement. Much greater transparency and improved communication during the process, so I would like to thank and acknowledge uh the planning committee. And the budget committee for their good work in that, in that effort. Um, next slide, please. Is our budget development methodology, we are um at this point in the year, we are using our recent past. Uh two years or three years to get an average number in our terms of our revenues in most of our areas. Uh our federal income, our state income, and and I'll spend a moment on our state income in just a moment. And our property tax revenues, our property tax revenues can constitute about eighty eight percent of our total revenues. And we are budgeting what uh would appear to be reasonably conservative. Um at a four point seven percent increase in our properties, local property tax revenues. Well, no more more about that number in mid uh second or third week in August, uh that number. Um could go up uh and likely will inch up based on certainly. Uh what we're seeing in our our recent history, so uh that's a s- a single. A particular data point that we will keep an eye on and will drive our final budget.
J- Jim, when you say you think it might move up, do you mean it might move up from tentative to final, might or once we?
We anticipate that the four point seven percent increase in property tax may improve above four point seven percent.
But do you think, or I guess this, I guess the question, we're gonna potentially select a higher number than four point seven, once we get to final?
And it'll be con- a confirmed number, right now it's a projected.
Right, okay.
Our expenditures, uh some significant qu- question marks here, actual salaries and wages are currently being negotiated by the bargaining units. And you'll see in the numbers that we have a number that we uh have, we're considering a set aside to have a placeholder in our budget. Um for some, some negotiated salaries, it is not intended to be a limit up or down. It's simply a placeholder so that we have a value in the budget uh that we can work with. Total benefits costs uh will be dependent on salary and salary negotiations. Operating expenses have been reviewed and adjusted based on our recent history. Uh and allocation of budget augmentation has been earmarked at two hundred thousand dollars with additional revenue. Excuse me, additional review. In the past, my colleagues across uh across the campus have said, w- w- why are we planning? Because we never have enough money. And so this was really an effort to say, we're going to earmark two hundred thousand dollars. To um to that you can apply for in terms of uh supporting your program, so. Uh this has been considered by the budget committee and is a component of the tentative budget. Capital outlay is estimated um. To be uh on the available data and based on projections and the last item, the last bullet there are OPEB. Our our other post employment benefits includes medical costs for retirees, which we anticipate will. Uh go up a bit and includes our SERP one and SERP two costs. Next slide, please. Here are planning assumptions, uh largely around uh enrollments. Um and some of these uh obviously this year is is not confirmed yet, but um it and the next year is consistent with last year. But you can see how we're trending here, initial enrollments uh for twenty four twenty five are anticipated to be comparable to twenty three twenty four. In twenty twenty one, you see we're at about four thousand twenty one FTES, we we have dropped since then. We are closing in on a more stable enrollment. Uh now, and I think uh with some of the programs and improvements uh on our campus, we might even see some slight increases as we look forward. Our revenue, material changes in revenue, we've talked about property taxes. A slight increase in state appropriations based upon a review of past revenue and a very modest. Cola growth from the state. Remember, that only applies to those, a small portion of those categorical funds, it doesn't apply to our property tax revenue. And included is lease revenue from the upper valley campus and additional revenue from student housing is not included in this tentative budget. Because we don't have enough information today to make uh to make a reasonable assumption about uh revenue or expenses, next slide please. Our planning assumptions are changes in costs, I just mentioned our faculty salaries, um our our permanent classified salaries are being negotiated as well. Uh all of our salaries are still an open question, let's say, um. And our benefits rates, we have information on that, that's included, I I look forward, information is included in this tentative. Uh we have a projection on our estimated changes in health and welfare benefits, our step in column adjustments are included and our audit. Uh class play pay is included, next slide, please. As I referenced before, our our new process uh provided an opportunity for our colleagues across the campus to. To submit requests for budget uh in two particular areas, one is in terms of strategic initiatives. New good ideas that our colleagues across the campus uh could identify, have identified through their their unit plans. And and could, what they would like to submit for funding. The uh planning committee managed these, and I would say with um uh with some institutional pride that. That the institution is prepared to fund all of the one of these pending final budget. And the one was an area that we we were just not prepared to address quite yet. Uh operational continuance requests, I use this number often uh because I like to get people's attention, we had sick, excuse me, two hun-. Two hundred and thirty some requests for operational continuance support. Um we are able, we are able, I believe, to address several of those, uh many of those perhaps. A good portion of those were um personnel requests of some kind, part time, full time. The um the cabinet uh under the president's signature issued a May first memorandum. Um indicating what personnel actions we were prepared to take at tentative budget. Uh they were fairly, th- they were uh clearly addressed to how we would. Uh how we would support students arriving on our campus as residents. Uh safety and security on augmentations and personnel, basic needs support for for students. Uh as they arrive on campus, that we changed, could change as we look to final budget, certainly. Uh the college has taken a very conservative approach to committing to personal costs at the tentative budget stage. Operational continuance requests, um I just mentioned facilities requests were considered by the district facilities committee. With recommendations, many of those are not included in the tentative budget, but will be considered as part of the file budget. That goes for technology requests as well, we will support uh a narrow margin of technology requests at tentative budget. We'll have better information as we look to final budget. And operating funds requests have been considered by the budget committee, and I mentioned that two hundred thousand dollar earmark. To give people a reason to say, yeah, we should just continue planning because there is an opportunity to get funding, next slide, please. Our changes in instructional costs um are are based in great measure on how many sections we offer. Um and sections uh are largely, uh our combination obviously of 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 full time and part time faculty. But this gives you a sense of how we're trending in terms of sections, uh ten fifty two and twenty twenty one. Uh we're, we're uh projecting this year, I think it's almost permit, probably, I think our summer needs to be accounted for. But we're looking at nine oh one sections uh right now, and we're projecting nine hundred sections uh in twenty four twenty five. So we're trending again towards uh more enrollment stabilization, I would, that's another indicator of such. Our next slide, please. Our creditors al- always want to see the connection between planning and budget. And uh while the graphic looks good, I think our, in reality, we're doing much better in that, in that area. Uh these are the goals that the institution has set out in terms of uh what we want to plan for this year. These goals uh are this year, so I would offer that our educational manner master plan will be the large driver moving forward. For our goals, uh development of goals, student performance, student basic needs, campus climate. Physical infrastructure and River Trail Village were the goals that were identified. And our colleagues across the campus responded to in terms of a budget requests. Next slide, please. Here, here are the commitments and how they align, on the far right column, you can see how they align with those goals. And here are the commitments that we are making, um the student equity support and success is actually a fund twelve goal. The number there is is the current year's goal, is not next year's goal. The likely change in that will be the COLA provided by those categorical programs, completely, that's about one point oh seven percent. A COLA increase for uh that program. Investments in technology and instructional equipment, um we're going to devote two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our recovery block grant. There, that's actually a fund eleven commitment. Instructional supplies, laptops and devices to expand internet access to the students and faculty. We're, we're devoting fifty thousand dollars there. And and then the next one, instructional supplies, we we are devoting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. An increase of fifty thousand through additional uh restricted lottery funding. And that, uh some of that funding can be used for um technology as well. One of, one area I want to highlight to you, the tentative budget, as we look at the numbers. The increase, decrease in fund balances, the percentages, i- is a percentage of total expenditures at fourteen point five six percent. Uh we're looking, it will show on the tentative budget, a reduction of the reserve at twenty seven thousand eight forty three. It's a fairly nominal amount, um I'll share with you, I think that number will be somewhat better. It does not incorporate the reserve balance that we anticipated the end of this year. And we actually, I I'll just. Project that we're gonna do a little better in our reserve balance this year, which will contribute to uh more reserve funding for next years. And we will endeavor uh um to eliminate that in the final budget with additional information and uh budget consideration. Next slide, please. Recall the May one memorandum we sent to the community regarding those hires, the value of those hires is three hundred three thousand dollars. Recall the May one memorandum we sent to the community regarding those hires. The value of those hires is three hundred, three thousand dollars. Um, uh, to address those personnel needs in advance of uh, um, of those immediate needs reserved. Related to, to student housing, uh, basic needs, et cetera. We have operational continuance, the two hundred thousand dollars I referenced, uh, basic needs, food support for student housing. Um, we, we have, we are requesting that we devote half a million dollars, up to half a million dollars. Uh, for some rollover lottery funds that we've had to support our one-year program to support food and our housing program. Our approach is really to expand our basic needs program. Many of you know that our basic needs meets the need, those basic needs of students across our campus. Who are in need of a variety of items, including, including food. We're expanding that approach to our housing. So that at no cost, uh, students in likely buildings one and two, excuse me, buildings two and three. Uh, will have free access to a number of items each day to support basic support. We have not finalized um, uh, this approach yet. We also want to add one prepared meal. For those students in the, in the evening. Likely a hot meal, it could be a salad or something, a, a choice if you will, but we're aiming for providing that one hot meal. Uh, in the evening for um, for students. And that would be included in spacing this approach. Our facilities master plan is, is earmarked at one hundred thousand. Um, our environmental consultant through the Ash landfill. I'm projecting that hundred thousand, uh, and fingers crossed, and at least consulting part of it, I anticipate to be concluded. In the next fiscal year. The remediation costs remain to be seen. Next slide, please. Our no score Fund eleven uh, includes replacement positions. This is pretty standard. Uh, considered necessary for continued operations and have been considered by the President's Cabinet on a case-by-case basis. Uh, we've utilized that as a position control mechanism over the last three years, maybe longer. Uh, and it's proven, it's proven reasonably effective. Uh, so we'll continue with that. And we want to, will want to augment that with the technology solutions in the near term. Technology investments includes funding for upgrading and replacement of selected technology. Number three, any changes in the fund balances that they just alluded to is a projected, uh, dependent on balance for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as I mentioned. I think they're going to turn out a little better than budgeted and revenues expenditures for twenty-four, twenty-five. The tentative budget includes an earmark, an earmark, replace multiple amount in anticipation of negotiated agreements. Related to compensation for faculty and staff. And again, I repeat, the tentative budget does not include any student housing revenue projections. Or possible expenses related to the district's subordinate liability should the project meet the performance seventy-five percent of occupancy in year one. We will address that more vigorously in the final budget as we get to more information.
Jim, quick. So on the replacement positions, operations, costs.
Mm-hmm.
Does the solar field factor into that or no? That, like, if we had to do something with our current solar field, could that be earmarked in this area?
President Iverson, I'm glad you asked that question. Uh, and next month, I anticipate bringing you uh, a proposal to move forward. On a solar solution for the institution, and one component of which would be the solar field. Another component of which would be the student housing, which is equipped for solar but doesn't have it. Um, and we didn't put it on the student housing program because we can get a better rate. And a better cost by incorporating a more comprehensive solar solution. And uh, as, as we've seen over the last few years, we need to put measures in place that. Gives us more predictable energy consumption, a more predictable profile of our energy consumption. And the solar solution will take us a long way. So if I can kick that can down the road at least one month, I think you'll, you'll see some interesting information. Encouraging information about how we can manage those energy costs. Uh, next slide, please. The most to Fund twelve, this is not a Fund twelve request, uh, a budget request. Uh, Fund twelve are those restricted funds, uh, and those will change as our categorical funding. Um, uh, it gets um. Gets evaluated in terms of what we'll be getting for this, from the state. So that is, uh, you'll have a, a look at not only Fund twelve, but all of our funds in the final budget. Expenditure and program balances are estimated and subject to change in Fund twelve based on the state's budget information. And college finance staff continue to review the appropriate and allowable allocation of expenses to Fund twelve. Changes uh, due to this continuing review accounts will be reflected in the final budget. I, my edit didn't make it here, but it really is a focus on meeting our fifty percent law threshold, our continuing efforts to, to look at that. Is there a next slide? There is. Next steps, um, pretty obvious, um. We'll make uh, adjustments to, to our final budget based on state revenues, based on local property tax revenues. There, there is trailer bill language um, from the state that will modify certainly the state appropriations. Our revenues and expenditures will be adjusted and supported by further analysis, revised estimates. Uh, and we'll go through, again, the process of a review by the, by the community. Planning and Budget Committee, President's Cabinet, and the final budget recommendation uh, to the president and considered adopted by, considered. And hopefully adopted by the board at their meeting in, in September of uh, this year. Can we go to? You have the next schedule, the, thank you, the AXL, thank you. This is really kept small by design, so you couldn't read any of it. What we've done is, is um, the columns, um, the green column is the proposed tentative budget containing the elements I just went over. The right column, the pink or, or salmon column are the variances, the, the change from the um. Fiscal year twenty-four budget to fiscal twenty-five. And the far right column is, is some support, the support arguments for those. What, how we came to those conclusions. Uh, let's scroll down a little bit to salaries. Salaries under expenditures, we, we have, um, withheld the salaries constant with one change in the salary column. You'll see. Toward the bottom, it says set aside. So we have a set aside of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And as, as I indicated, and I would repeat, the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, it's not a floor, it's not a ceiling. It is an earmark. In the interest of full disclosure, uh, I'll share with you that the Budget Committee. Uh, 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 collected, uh, determined that they wanted to increase that to one million dollars. Maintain the current reserve number and take any savings out of reduction, out of operating expenses. That was a recommendation to um, to Dr. Powell. And if I can paraphrase Dr. Powell's response. Uh, that while we um, we continue to look at savings on the expense side. At this point in the tentative budget, um, that we would like to maintain this earmark. And continue to look at that through the summer as we look to the final budget. Dr. Powell, did I paraphrase you close? Okay. And if I can just scroll down, Catherine, just scroll down a bit. Um, you can see in the reserve number, we're reflecting that uh, a little more, a little more. Uh, a decrease in the reserve balance of twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, with a, a funding, a fund and a reserve of seven point six million dollars. Again, I repeat myself, we anticipate that to be a bit better because we also anticipate this year to be a bit better in terms of reserves. So with that, I would, if there are any further questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. Otherwise, that would conclude my presentation of the tentative budget.
I have a. A question and a couple of questions and, and I guess a request. Um, first, I'm just curious, Ev. Um, so the housing. Revenue and expenses is all going to be reflected in Fund eleven. Is, is, have you considered having it in a separate fund and then having that, like, that reflected as transfer in, transfer out?
Certainly at the board's discretion, we can do that. Um, you know, we, we have both sides of the equation at this point. Um, so we, you know, from a funding perspective, we may want to earmark. Um, some numbers, some funds as in another fund to be drawn on should a subordinate liability need to be uh, put in place. Um, and, and the revenue uh, perhaps located there as well.
Uh, my second question was, um, will the finance audit committee uh, get a chance to look at the final budget before it comes to the board?
I think that would be a good idea. Yes, trust you.
And then I just had a, um, I guess my, my request is, um, the, the planning and budget priorities uh, and goals. I, 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 one of the things I'd like to see, and I think it would be easily done even for the final budget, is to have those tied to the board goals.
Okay, good suggestion.
Trusty Don. Jim, getting back to the um, the assumed property tax increase of, I think, with four point seven right now. I just, I, I'm not going to say what that number, you suggested that the number very well might be higher. I just think. That the, the trend or the, the, what would tend to look at the last five, ten years to see the impressive. Um, taxural increases that we've had in the county, but I just don't think. It's not reasonable for us to think that that is sustainable, that that is the highest growth that the county has ever had in its hundred-year, you know, history. So um, I think in particular for this year alone, where we are with interest rates and not, not touching at all. I just think this is the year out of all years not to be looking in the past at these historic record-breaking trends. And we'd be very conservative of how we approach, um, you know, final budget and making those assumptions. I know that makes your job a lot more difficult. Um, but I think it's important.
Duly noted. Uh, this assumption is based on the last two-year average of increases. So you're right, the history may not serve us well because last year was pretty high, extraordinarily, you know, historically high. So um, we'll have more, we'll have confirmed information certainly in the next uh, sixty days. And that will clearly um, clearly shape how we, the final budget looks. And, and, and we'll, we'll continue to consider how in the event that we have flat revenues or. Um, or reduced revenues, uh, what we need to do in our operations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one that has been thinking about lately is, what is the amount of students based on our current funding with property taxes and our district size? What's like the sweet spot that we can maintain with our current budget?
That's a great question. Um, and involves um. It, it involves some new components to our program, a residential program that at some point is fully engaged. Uh, will generate revenues to, to answer that question in a different way than it, as it does today, than it does today. Today, I think, you know, thirty-two hundred things, things feels pretty comfortable. Uh, and, and that's one person's perspective. I'm sure others have others. Uh, you know, from my perspective, we're still short on our operational expenses. Uh, our FON is still. We're, we're still at twenty-nine over the FON. There's, there is concern among some that we're, we're overstaffed. And, and on all areas. Um, and we're certainly short on investments in some of our operational areas, including our facilities area. And our, still our technology areas. So what's comfortable? Um, thirty-two hundred feels pretty comfortable if we can continue to generate revenues from other sources. Including the student housing program. The wine education program will generate interest in our program. Uh, and I'll be frank with you, the ability to attract uh, students from out of state, out of the country. Brings a revenue stream that will help us tremendously.
Thank you. Um, with that, no more questions. This is an action item. So do I have a motion on the tentative budget? The motion by trustee Deluna, to have a second, second, second by trustee Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then Jim, because you're up for the next few items. I'm just gonna read those items and then I'm gonna turn it over to you. So twelve point two, resolution for establishing twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-five appropriations, this is the GAN limit. Twelve point three, which is resolution for proposition thirty, education protection account spending plan. And then we have the summary of the governor's may revise, that's twelve point five. And the five-year capital outlay and construction lands. And I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Iverson. I feel the cadence quickening. The twelve point one, excuse me, twelve point two is a resolution establishing the twenty-four, twenty-five GAN limit. The GAN limit is a state, uh, state mandated um, calculation. Uh, so that we establish a limit for the institution. Uh, and, and it, it helps in terms of. Um, uh, what does it help in terms of? Uh, for, uh, for calculation of revenue uh, uh, based on a limit established by the state. Uh, I, I'm often confusing the GAN and the EPA. So. The back worksheet provides the calculation for this, and you can tell in the notes here that, that, um, how the calculation has come to. And, and we're asking the board to uh, to authorize this GAN limit at forty-six million, two ninety-five, four oh seven. Based on the adjustments we've made in the upper part of the uh, of the schedule.
Have a motion on approving the GAN limits in action. I know this is twelve point two.
So much.
Have a.
One second.
By trustee Deluna, and a second by trustee Olson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you. Twelve point three, Jim.
The educational protection account is, uh, spending plan is um, a calculation uh, established by um. About, by the state for the distribution of incremental property tax to districts. And what the district has to do is, is provide um, how it's spending those EPA dollars. That the district receives in, in a public way and, and to make those uh, um, records available to the public. If you go to the back page, you're already there. Thank you, Catherine. This is the EPA distribution for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. It is the third period. And the calculation where the accounts are indicates how the college is spending the EPA dollars. Uh, we're spending three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, or the three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars were received from EPA funding in this way. And this resolution uh, from the board recognizes how we're spending these dollars. There are some restrictions here. We can't spend it for administrative costs or fees. Um, they, they're devoted to instructional costs. So this calculation is a declaration that we're spending those uh, funds in that way.
Do I have a motion for twelve point three, resolution for proposition thirty?
Move to approve.
A motion by trustee Deluna, to have a second, second by trustee Don. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Jim, twelve point one, twelve point four unrestricted general fund.
Thank you, President Iverson. I'll call your attention to the schedule, uh, the budget schedule. You'll notice upper right corner. Uh, we are at ninety-two percent of the budget. We are at eleven twelfths of the budget. So in terms of the fiscal year, we are almost home. Um, you'll notice on the revenue side, far right column gives you a percentage. Of dollars as compared to where we are in, in the fiscal year. Uh, so we're at ninety-two percent of the year. You can expect on all these columns to be generally close to ninety-three percent. Uh, some a little lower, hopefully not too many, much higher except for that one. Um, so we're at ninety-five percent of our total revenue that we, we budgeted for. Um, property taxes always of interest. We're at ninety-seven percent of our budgeted property tax revenue at this point in the year. We can expect, we can expect a little more um, revenue to trickle in. Uh, so we are, we are in reasonable shape here. We're about two point three million dollars ahead of last year in terms of revenue. On our salary side, uh, total, we're at eighty-nine percent as compared to ninety-two percent of the year. I'll share with you that the, the retroactive salary increases to the faculty schedule. Will occur in June, so they are not reflected here. However, I don't have any particular concerns that it's going to send us in a, in, in a, in a, a negative direction in any material way. Um, we are, faculty salaries temporary, we are all on target here. Um, our admin academic permanent are trending below budget. As our administrative confidential permanent, we're trending a little below budget, but our total at eighty-nine percent. We look uh, pretty good there as we do in our. We look, uh, pretty good there as we do in our benefits area. Our, uh, total books and supplies are at eighty-six percent. We're trending positively there. And in terms of other operating expenses, we're doing it eighty-five percent there. The only outlier I would point out, I've been pointing out, I think for most of the years, that two thousand four hundred and forty-five percent variance. Uh, it's a very small number, four thousand dollars, uh, but that was due to some small expenses, uh, minor expenses in safety, security, I believe. Um, we are trending, uh, our total expenditures, um, line forty-eight, we're eighty-seven percent, uh, budget. And, uh, and our fund balance, uh, we're still looking at a positive fund balance, and I repeat, uh, likely to be a bit more than we budgeted. So with that, I would certainly entertain any questions.
And information item, do you guys have any questions? Twelve point five, summary of the governor's main revisions.
Thank you, President Iverson. I will be brief. Um, we covered a bit of this, um, last month. However, um, under the main revision, the overall state budget would be lower. The overall state budget would be lower than proposed in January and lower than the twenty-three, twenty-four enacted budget, uh, decreasing by about seven percent. What it means to California community colleges, it essentially, uh, includes no major core reductions to programs or services. Instead, drawing on reserves and operational savings to bring the overall budget and balance for California community colleges, not the state. Overall, uh, funding increases slightly, uh, and that's largely due to that one point oh seven percent COLA increase. Um, ongoing spending include about a hundred million for a one point oh seven cost of living increase and continued funding uh, for certain categorical programs, including our, uh, student equity and achievement program, our DSPS program, et cetera. Um, they're still maintaining, uh, funding for the nursing program across the state and, um, and for several projects related to the, uh, system's vision for twenty-three priorities. I would just, uh, add here, uh, from our perspective, we are getting continued affirmation that that old thirty-one million dollar grant issue for housing is about to be put to bed. And we will not, uh, be subject to that clawback that we were concerned about at some point. The signals have been very positive. We've had great advocacy, not only, um, not only at, uh, at the chancellor's office, but at uh, our, with our colleagues with the state facilities authority and, uh, to thank our local, our, our local political representatives who have advocated in our behalf. So a big thanks goes to, to everyone. The impact on Napa Valley College's budget, as I've, I've mentioned, is, is as largely, um, to our categoricals. As this summary suggests, we don't anticipate significant or material swings in those funding levels. Um, certainly at this point, uh, there could be changes. There's been some discussion of clawbacks and things in programs such a strong workforce. That has not been finalized yet. Um, but that could be in the offing. So with that, I would, uh, I would conclude my report on the state budget.
Many questions? Catherine, do we have any public comment? Just checking.
Nope, we do not.
Right. Jim, twelve point six, this is an action item, five-year capital outlay and construction plan.
Thank you, President Iverson. The capital outlay project listing is presented to the board each year. Um, it represents capital outlay that would be subject to public funding or bond funding. Um, you'll notice, uh, the priorities here, they're essentially the same as last year. Um, and I would offer that they will likely change as a result of a facilities master plan. Uh, and I would also offer that the number one on this remains the number one as it is, um, was funded with Prop fifty-one monies for planning, and we received a generous gift, uh, generous allocation from the state on behalf of, um, Senator Dodd, um, to, to, uh, move that project forward. The remainder of these projects are on hold and are subject to reevaluation as a facilities master plan, uh, comes to fruition. I would certainly entertain any questions on, on the capital outlay plan for twenty-five to thirty.
Motion to approve.
Uh, motion by trustee Dodd.
I'll second.
Uh, second, my trustee Olson. All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Think you're done now. Get a little break there. Thank you. Uh, thirteen point one, this is our second reading of board policies.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, my trustee Dodd. I have a second, my trustee Baker is waiting for it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any public comment on those, Catherine?
No, no public comments.
Going a little different. Thirteen point two, board policy revisions, first reading. Information item. No questions? Okay, we're gonna move to reports. Fourteen. We have pretty quiet boardroom this evening. Okay, one, I'm gonna read through them anyways. Fourteen point two, associated students of Napa Valley College report. This is preashorma president. Do we have nothing here? Fourteen point three, classified senate report. This would be Daniel Alexander. No report. Fourteen point four, classified association report. This is Justin Yonkota. No report. Fourteen point five, administrative confidential. No report. Fourteen point six, academics in that report. Matthew Kronzer. No report. Fourteen point seven, faculty association report. John Clinchco. No report. Turn it over to fifteen point one. This is president. Time there reports. What do we have?
I'm so sorry. Um. Okay, here we go. Sorry.
Good.
Oops, no one. You go in first.
Okay, for the academic affairs report, good evening. Um, first one to highlight where we are in the cadence of the year. So Monday is the start of summer session. It goes from June seventeenth through August eighth, and you can see a comparison from year to year that we're up slightly, um, in both enrollments and headcount. We do have a number of full classes. Some are, still have spaces available. June twentieth is the last day to add, if you know someone seeking a class still. I also wanted to highlight, um, a recent visit to the backglow rate degree workshop at the chancellor's office on June tenth and eleventh. I attended that with, uh, Professor Ricardo Guzman, who's the respiratory care program coordinator you met, uh, last month. And, um, that was a great opportunity to connect with other leads, uh, if, who are already offering backglow rate programs in respiratory care. We heard from more than fifteen speakers about best practices for program development. And one of the, um, things that I found very interesting was the recommendation that when developing an initial backglow rate, um, there are nine units of upper division general education courses that are required as part of that program. And they recommended to try to write them in a way so that if you develop future pro- uh, programs, they could apply to both. So you're not writing many more courses. So that was very useful. Um, the emphasis was really on the importance of these programs in terms of equity. And a couple of the data points that I thought would be useful to share were that fifty-six percent of the initial cohort of, from our existing backglow rate degree program graduates said that they would not have pursued a bachelor's degree if their local community college did not offer it. Um, also, the average increase, and this number will be higher now. This is from the cohort, uh, who graduated in twenty twenty. The average increase in annual earnings for those who had received their community college backglow rate was eighteen thousand four hundred per year. And I will say that they did have that broken out by, um, equity populations and for, uh, Latino Latina, uh, students. This was actually higher as a differential twenty-two thousand dollar increase, um, per year. So there's a significant impact that we can have through these programs. And the last point I'd like to highlight is an area which has been very, um, small relative to our other offerings and appropriately so. But we can, uh, invest some time in shoring up and developing how we offer contract education. And for those who might not be familiar with that, that is when another entity, it could be a company, a nonprofit, um, a, another government agency needs to have a class that's specific to the needs of their employees. And they ask us to offer that class. This is different from, um, our other course offerings in that they, they pay for the cost of instruction. And so right now, recognizing that there are some needs in our community, um, we are clarifying processes, really developing and put, solidifying partnerships. Um, and I wanted to give just a couple of examples so you can get a sense of what those, uh, contract education courses are and might be. So for Napa State Hospital, one of the items on your consent agenda tonight was providing, uh, health occupations eight seventy-two intravenous therapy course. This is going to serve thirty-five nurses who work at Napa State Hospital. And as you, um, know, these professions require them to have, uh, annual updating of their skills. And so this will provide them with that opportunity. The Napa State Hospital covers the expense. Our teachers teach the class, so it's a great synergy. Um, another example is for the Napa Valley Farm Worker Foundation. We're providing customized welding training for employees that has, um, Spanish support for learners who need that. So, uh, it's probably obvious, but this is very much connected with our mission, the component of being community oriented and with our EMP, which says one of the five major goals in the EMP is alignment with regional labor market goals. So, um, I wanted to highlight this because in the future you'll be seeing a few more of these contracts coming your way, and I want to make sure you're aware what they're for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board, community. I, um, should have a free, not, not too many things to report on this, not that, however, some really important ones going on. Specifically, I wanted to highlight the NBC registration days that we have, that we have scheduled throughout the summer. NBC registration days I was talking about on a couple of different occasions. Um, it's really that one-stop student experience that we provide students, um, especially in the onboarding process to our community and to our students. And this is collaboration among admissions and rectors from actually counseling those support services. We literally open up the thirteen hundred building and have all our services present and really helps students to make that connection and that onboarding. So we've already had some um, activities this last couple of weeks, um, and we have more, um, days planned throughout the rest of the summer. So it's a very exciting opportunity for students to have the community to, to come and will help you through the entire process. Um, also, I'm gonna highlight, uh, some work we've been doing around River Trail, um, and the connections to student affairs. We control up a little bit. Um, so over this last, a few weeks, last couple of months, we, we lifted up, it's called the operations team, and the operations team is really a collaboration um, with the housing team staff, um, enrollment services, financial aid counseling, and our DSPS services. This is making sure that all parties are working together and helping students to, again, um, onboard on, into the housing and specifically into NBC for success. So making sure that our enrollment services is talking to the housing team, talking to the financial aid team. So, um, that bridge, that connection with counseling DSPS as well has been really critical and vital. Um, so that's an ongoing meeting that I, I plan to, to have after, even after the housing, uh, program opens well into next year. Um, also met with the Mentis, uh, team, that's therapist and River Trail Village to start looking through the process of referrals for students who may need mental health support, um, specifically around, um, River Trail. So, uh, what that process will look like, the, the, um, ways we're gonna help students to get to support if need be. So we're walking through the, the steps of that. Also met, um, with our town line coordinator, VP Charles, and our housing team to talk about what we're gonna do around town line and specifically referrals around that. So we're mapping out that process as possible. Been to lots of organized space. Um, and really make, making sure that our, um, River Trail Village residents are uh, they're receiving the support that they need specifically around student affairs, so they have that ballistic, um, uh, support that all falls to the. So that's really been, been really important work that we've been focusing on. Also something I didn't hear, but I think I might, I wanted to lift up and highlight, um, on, uh, Monday, I was interviewed for the, uh, the radio, um, and, um, was, uh, went and discussed the, the River Trail Village, both in English and Spanish. So it was a good opportunity, uh, wind down media to, to, um, just get out there and, and, uh, do a podcast. I think that'll be, uh, introduced here soon around that. So more to come on that. Um, Rod made sure to keep me, you know, humble and I'm not, I'm not a grasshopper. Um, it is a good opportunity for us to just put the word out there in, in both English and Spanish. Um, so professional development opportunity that's coming up, so I'm gonna be participating in along with VP Charles is, uh, on June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I will be participating with a group of not the educators, I'm at the town of San Education, to a trip to the Museum of Tolerance in Los Angeles. So this is just an opportunity to, it's, it's a, we built experience, powerful experience around, um, really specifically for educators. And I was happy to be, uh, to be invited, uh, to participate in that. And, um, I plan, we plan to do a report back to the larger community, uh, different groups around that we, the, um, why our experience is like in Los Angeles. So very excited about that work, um, and that's, I think, is very pleasant to see.
Thank you, Dr. Guerrero. Brief, um, um, update on what's going on in administr- administrative services. I've covered the, um, the budget pretty thoroughly, I think. Institutional technology, I want to declare a success. And congratulations on the migration of our enterprise systems to the cloud over last weekend, um, without much of a speed bump. Uh, thankfully to the implementation team led by Terry McKinney, our CIO and his team. In addition to Dr. Priscilla Mora, Rod Aubrey and others there to be congratulated for, uh, almost flawless, uh, migration to the cloud. This is a big step for the institution, will help us, um, it will help improve reliability and most importantly, security. So thanks to everyone on that front. The district technology committee will be rolling forward vigorously with their strategic plan and their total cost of ownership in anticipation of having that ready for the next accreditation round, uh, in, early in, uh, twenty-five. A student housing update, the construction schedule continues, uh, to project a completion date in August twenty-four. The college's implementation team is working, continues to work through the summer to address many issues of which, uh, Dr. Guerrero, uh, referenced, uh, the numbers today. Uh, today we have, um, just short of eight hundred inquiries about housing, applications in progress, um, over four hundred and seventy. The, um, the process for moving students on to fully licensed agreements continues to be lagging a bit. We have fully executed license, license agreements as of last week at thirty-eight. We met yesterday, yesterday with the marketing team. We have adopted some, uh, several new incentive programs, uh, to engage students in in the housing program to, to, to appeal to their need to reduce the costs and to provide, um, easier access into those low, uh, those low, uh, cost units. So, uh, we're, we're pulling all the levers. We've actually expanded our reach in terms of our marketing to a larger area, uh, uh, in California primarily. We also have an international reach, uh, as we've discussed before, but I think the, the, uh, the, uh, uh, the results on that will take a little longer to fully realize, but we're certainly underway. We are seeing, as I mentioned before, an increased number in, in out of state and F-one students, international students. So that looks very promising in terms of, um, our appeals and institution and our programs. The wine education center, uh, is, as you know, underway. Um, we issued, um, the, uh, the budget and the, uh, and the cash flow, cash demand analysis, uh, very recently. So we'd be happy to share that with you, should you, should you want to take a look at that. Our facilities, uh, we're about to send out, uh, what we're working on our projects in facilities. Uh, this summer primarily, our projects are, are focused in a few areas. The primary area is addressing any safety uh, uh, concerns related to, uh, residential population, including trip hazards and lighting in, in very specific areas. In addition, we're doing some what we call moves and changes over the summer and some improvements, we have some office changes, et cetera, so they're focused largely in those areas. Ash landfill is uh is moving along, uh I'd like to have the last, the Ash landfill as a closed uh topic as you would. Um, but we're uh making good progress, our engineering firm Langen has been terrific. Uh, and they have helped steward the relationship with the county in terms of addressing uh that landfill issue, so uh we're making good progress. I would, I would want to acknowledge the uh Martin Group here. The Martin Group has been very cooperative in supporting this Ash landfill remediation project, and they have, they have purchased the fencing that will go around the Ash landfill to uh segregate it from the public kind of walking in and out, so uh I I want to acknowledge them and thank them for their cooperation here, it's it's been quite a commitment on their part. And with that, I would conclude my report.
Good evening. In here my resources, we are focusing this year on efficiency and improving the resources that are used in our area to support the entire campus. As of June seventeenth, we are beta testing the online self-service leave reporting. I have to say, first of all, thank you to Jim Reeves um for supporting us and allowing uh a Lucian consultant with our department to improve on the resources. Online self-reporting, uh self uh self-service leave reporting, what that does for our department, if you can imagine approximately four hundred manual data entry and auditing of leaf slips every month. I mean, yes, every month, so that's about twelve hundred in six months, that is done by one person manually. Margin of error as well as trying to keep up with balances. So this improvement, so as we move to the cloud and we're seeing a lot of different functions come to life, this is really getting benefit to how we serve our employees here at Napa Valley College. Moving on to recruitment, I want to thank the board for supporting our efforts in addressing replacement positions and the positions that were identified um in the May first memorandum by Dr. Powell. We continue to be very active in our recruitment. We have um eight that were sent for approval. Uh, we have three pending offers or acceptance. Uh, five open positions, and we still have eight positions that we are in process of getting those posted. Have some really good news. Our campus is active, they walk. Our walking challenge for the spring has ended. And thank you all of you who did participate, however, you as board of trustees, you did not win the challenge. I don't know why and how that didn't happen, but you didn't win. However, as a as a campus or campus overall participation resulted in sixteen million eighty-three thousand six hundred and fifty steps in total. We did have a top individual, and that's Gina Gina Stofan with her total number of steps, one million one hundred and ninety-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-two steps. And then the top group, and I I'm gonna try and say this without laughing, it's gonna be hard. Popo and Franz, that's the name of the group. Um, the members of that group, Alba Madrigal, um Chief Wade, Amy Bond, Point Maddox, Jovita de la Cruz. Their total number of steps steps, three million two hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-six.
Wow.
So we will be coming out with another challenge in the fall. I do hope that all of you participate along with everyone else on the campus. It is fun, it is a great way to engage, get to know other people on our campus. Um, as as Dr. Dr. Guerrero uh mentioned, I will be joining Dr. Guerrero on June twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth at the Museum of Tolerance. And we look forward to bringing back an update on what we learned and how we can take that learning and implement it here at Napa Valley College to make a difference. Thank you.
I'll go on the record and say that I'll be doing the uh step challenge in the fall with you, so. Maybe we get a president's office team going to. Uh. Just uh a one quick thing I want to share, which will be in the written report that you receive. Um, we received our accreditation report findings back from the commission yesterday. And the the good news, the really great news is, it's everything that we anticipated and expected it to be. Essentially, what they've done is uh affirm that the college has met four and a half of the six requirements, so on one of the requirements, we got through half of the checkboxes and there's still another half to go, uh which means that we have one and a half additional requirements that we need to meet. The timeframe that they gave us was a twelve month timeframe from the March first deadline, so we we submit uh our follow-up report on March fourth, twenty twenty-five. And the areas are exactly what we anticipated, they're what VP Reeves alluded to uh several times in his in his presentations tonight, and that's really dialing in the total cost of ownership piece and ensuring that our facilities master plan and our technology master plans are are accomplished and finished. And so we're gonna be moving very, very aggressively in the fall semester and the spring semester to ensure that we we complete those plans and that we incorporate the long-term uh budgeted impacts of some of our financial decisions as it relates to facilities and technology. And those are memorialized within those two plans. Um, at times, we may be moving a little faster than the college is accustomed to, maybe even comfortable with. But this is an accreditation requirement for us, right? So uh the the clock is ticking, it started ticking back in March. Uh, we're gonna do our best to ensure that, you know, we're we're uh deliberate and intentional in our outreach and we engage uh the the full campus stakeholders in the process uh so that this is a robust and uh highly participated in process in the same way that our educational master plan was. But it's gonna feel rushed, it's gonna feel kind of fast. So I just want everybody to, you know, really take a moment to reflect on the 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 outstanding work that collectively, you know, the college has done uh to really ensure that we're addressing those other areas and just continue that great momentum as we roll into the fall semester and spring uh so that we can check off those last two boxes and then, you know, be fully credited moving forward. And that concludes the president area reports.
Thank you. Uh, next is fifteen point two, this is our standing committee and other appointment reports. Start with district auxiliary services foundation board of directors. Anything from Better Culture Winery? Raphael is not here. Napa Valley College Foundation. Report.
Uh, actually, probably during our meeting, uh the invitation or with the registration page just went out for the Storm Cup. We have our our first uh major underwriter, which is speaking of the generosity of the Martin Group, the Martin Group has agreed to um uh through their their family, a ten thousand dollar uh sponsorship of the event, so which will certainly be the major underwriter. Um, so that's very exciting news, and um if you know any golfers, please forward that email along. I think all the trustees should have been um invited on that, but if not, let me know. I think I should put Martin on there. Her husband is a big golf nerd like myself, so.
Uh, I don't see, I don't see finance on here, anything to report there? Um, we've done Armic Fearsay, Ed Chang. Okay. All right. Dare I say, we're moving into fifteen point four trustee and board chair reports. Oh, where? I don't actually have that. Oh, it's not on here. Uh, any future agenda agenda items? Shoot.
Um, something that has uh been coming up at my in my day job lately a lot is um ADA compliance. And uh is we're just kind of yeah, we're we're still grappling with um what, we're beginning a lot of requests for things and we're still kind of grappling with what we are required to do versus what people are asking for and figuring where we can meet in the middle in terms of funding. And one of the things that I know uh I've brought up a couple of um doorway things in the past that um still need to be resolved, but um the main thing that's been coming up that's new to me is um things for the heart of hearing. And so I just would like to see some sort of report or something, just kind of where, you know, if we need to do an audit, kind of figure out where we are, what we're providing now, and if there are places that we need to to kind of start planning for.
Anybody else? Uh, well, my trusty board chair reports, let's start with our student trustee.
Um, nothing to report.
Just go down the road.
Uh, I attended the uh the retreat as we all did, and we got a nice tour of the student housing, which was nice, it's coming along very nicely, and I just wanna real quickly say that I miss all the senate representatives' reports. I really love the shared governance system, and I guess it's working really well, but I still would love to you know, that that's you gotta hear from you, so I'd like to ask you to show up and and say hi and just, you know, tell us we're doing a good job or a bad job, whatever. Thanks.
No major reports, but I have seen a lot of our River Tail Village social media posts and everything, and I I've noticed that not all of them are translated, so if we could maybe possibly get more multilingual posts and kind of more of that maybe virtual tours, something um since I wasn't here, I was out sick um for the last tour that the trustees went on. Um, some, you know, small posts of like in the bedrooms and stuff, I I know I work closely with the California volunteers. Um, and they their social media post, they just released one today that was um like Lady Whistledown announcement from Bridgerton, if anybody watches that. But anyway, it was it was very well received by um a lot of people in our nonprofit community and the volunteer space. Um, so I got different text messages from people saying like, wow, they're really connected to our community, right, and what's kind of in and trending at this time, so I just thought even just like a funny little fun way to to bring more um of that student maybe community perspective to the housing project and what we're doing at the college would be fun to do. And that's all.
Good idea. Trustee Baker.
Well, thank you for the reminder that part two dropped today, so I know what I'm doing later, if I can stay awake. Um, speaking of staying awake, uh behalf of a project graduation, like to thank the college for hosting grad night last night, it was fantastic. We don't have final numbers yet, but we did have record pre-sales. And uh we were checking kids in till about eleven thirty last night. And just, we still had a line until eleven thirty when we opened the doors at nine. Uh, so it was, it was a very, very well attended and um I am tired. So um also really uh enjoyed the uh tour of the housing units and uh if I ever get to retire, uh I hope it still has that new dorm smell because I may take some classes just so I can live there, it's really fun. Maybe just for occasional nights a week.
Trustee Olson.
Um, yeah, I just, you know, want to say it was a really great um my second year as a trustee, really great end of the year ceremonies, I attended several of the pinnings and the winery. Um, the Wine Net Center groundbreaking was really well done. Um, I think the foundation is doing a fantastic job um to making sure everybody you know, is represented, everybody is at the table for these types of celebrations. Commencement was wonderful, it's always so sweet. Um, and also the tour of River Ta- Trail, I was really impressed with um how fast it's you know, come along and and we're here, we're ready, so that's, you know, just really excited to be part of that project, um. It's speaking of accessibility, it's so interesting because I just heard a news top person on my prevention team at Mentos, and she found that on Canva, there's an accessibility tool, and you can make your flyers and your graphics accessible, um but it can then translate to social media, and I don't even know about it, so that's something if we don't know about it already, we should look into. Um, and for Charlie and Dr. Guerrero, I I wish you a great trip to Museum of Tolerance. I went when I was in design school down in Pasadena. It's twenty, thirty, almost thirty years ago, and it was a tremendously touching experience, so take some time, make sure you don't have much scheduled after you go, because you're gonna want some time just to process it. That's it, thanks.
Everything that you said, Jenny, that was very good. Um, but I think just in in addition to that, you know, uh Dr. G hitting everybody, your team helping out with graduation commencement was awesome. I just so dialed in, um and it's very impressive, I also just want to give a a major shout out to to our, the Village Trail team. I know you guys are working so hard and it's so complex and this is doesn't include everything else that you're doing, which is normally under your your job title, but um and uh, yeah, I just, we all see you, we we see you rolling up your sleeves, being creative, being thoughtful, asking tough questions. Um. Yeah, putting putting it all out there, and so I under, I think I know tight, really tight deadlines, and I know that's a yeah, there's a lot going on and it's a little, you know, stressful, and um I just did, I I see it very much, and I just want to let you know how much I individually appreciate, I I'm sure I can speak for my colleagues here in the board that they they feel e- exactly the same way, so thank you.
And I think that not much to add, I think you guys all covered it, uh. Sorry if I rushed you guys a little bit this evening, but I had a little head start there, so I jumped on it, so appreciate you guys rolling with me. Uh, with that said, perhaps we should take a little more time and close session or no? I'm not, uh, so announcement of our future meeting is regular July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. And I'm gonna adjourn us at six thirty-seven.